Welcome to this meeting of the Boulder Valley Board of Education. The vision of the Boulder Valley School District is that we develop our children's greatest abilities and make possible the discovery and pursuit of their dreams, which when fulfilled will benefit us all. We provide a comprehensive and innovative approach to education and graduate successful, curious, lifelong learners who confidently can confront the great challenges of their time. Okay. Let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. Wait. Oh, well.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You're actually probably supposed to call the roll, Laura. Do you do that now? Val Val.
Here.
Benford.
Here.
Fuqua.
Garcia.
Here.
Gebhardt.
Here.
Marquess.
Here.
Myers.
Here.
Okay, so our first item on our agenda is the Superintendent's Report.
Good evening. Welcome to all of you. A few items I'd like to mention this evening. First of all, and others may comment on this later as well, but we had a successful Latino Parent Summit on Saturday, thanks to Richard and many others who helped organize that event. So we had a good gathering and sharing of information, also some educational classes and a lot of youth there as well. So anyway, thanks to all who were a part of that. It was a fun day and an educational day at Casey Middle School. Yesterday, as a part of the professional development activity, the Nederland entire teaching community gathered here in this building for a half a day of work around visioning. And so, as you probably know, we have a new principal at the middle senior high, and Carrie Yatzir is there as the principal, and also Jeff Miller, who is a principal at the elementary school. They are working together with Dan Lawler, with their communities, to do some visioning activities as they prepare for Phase Two of their bond work. And so it was a good gathering and good conversation as a school community, working on their vision and mission. This Friday, the Latino Chamber of Commerce is hosting their business conference. It will be hosted in Longmont. Bianca Gallegos is the president of the Latino Chamber. She's one of our administrators. And so we, as we have the last couple of years, will have a number of students who will participate in that conference and also participate in entrepreneurial competition. Last year, Justice High was the winner of that competition. So anyway, we'll see how it turns out this year, but that's a great event, and I look forward. I'll make some comments on Friday at that conference. I just want to remind you that next week, we have a board work session, and just because of a little bit of timing, I did clear this with Sam, the work session next week will be on technology update. That was one of our seven that we identified with Heather's facilitation a couple of weeks ago, that we wanted to have an update on where we are with technology, both on the administrative side and also on the educational side. So Andrew Moore and Kelly Sane will take lead on doing that, our presentation and conversations. I'll look forward to that. That's a week from tonight. Also, I think you all received notice of this, but on the 20th of October, in the evening, the Uni-Hill neighborhood community will be gathering, and they've asked that we give them an update on just where things are with Uni-Hill and NuVista. I copied you on that correspondence. We sent a letter home today, which I shared with you as well, to both the NuVista and the Uni-Hill community, just kind of an update, same information we shared with the League of Women Voters a week or so ago, and that was some of it. We'll share that evening for those who attend that meeting, and of course, you're all welcome to attend if you would, if it's in your calendars. And then, the last thing I just want to mention on your agenda this evening, it's on consent, is the Family and School Partnership Education Month Resolution. So the last few years, we've had a resolution that's come before you for your approval, and generally, we have a presentation associated with that, but those who might normally give that presentation are committed to other events this evening, but I just want to reinforce this is under Madeline Case's leadership with, as a Director of Parent-Family Engagement as a part of our strategic plan. Good work is happening around this, including what I just mentioned happened on Saturday. So anyway, I just want to draw your attention to that resolution. We appreciate the good work of our staff and the parent community as one of our strategies and the strategic plan. So that formally concludes my report, Jenny, and I'd be glad to answer any questions if there are any.
Does anybody have any? Kathy?
There's been some publicity lately around the accreditation status and opt-out, and I was wondering if you could just kind of address, we've had a high opt-out and what the department's position is and how we're going to be addressing that?
So several things are going on right now. One is with the park assessment in its second year, resetting the accountability and accreditation standards. So one of the issues that has come up as a part of that conversation, because of kind of re-norming and benchmarking of this new assessment, is also where we will be with regard to participation. And as I think most of you know, it has been and will continue to be under federal legislation that we have, are to have a 95% participation rate and student assessment, student participation rate on the state assessments. And we also have legislation in the state of Colorado that authorizes parents to have the right to opt their children out of such said assessment. So that really is in conflict with what the expectation is around the federal expectations as well as state expectations. And so in conversations I've had with the interim commissioner on this topic, and I would say still in conversation, is that would there be a consequence for school districts? It's my understanding, the way it's being applied now, that if it is, if school districts have documentation to show that the students who opted out of the assessment, then they will not lower the accreditation standard as a result of the high percentage of opt-out or a low percentage of participation, but there will be a flag and notation on the report for school for district that it was a low participation, so that it gives that context for that. If a school has a large number of students who opt out and there isn't parent documentation, then they would be graded down one level within the accreditation standard. And we are, as a school district, there are a few of our schools that the documentation is not in order, so that, you know, we'll clearly have that in place for next year. I mean, that is our intent. By the time students become high schoolers, sometimes they think they can act on their own without parent permission. So we'll reinforce that if they're going to opt out of the test, they need their parents to opt them out of the test unless they're 18. So anyway, that's my understanding, Kathy, is how it's being interpreted. I would just say that's still very much at play and probably will come up in this legislative session again as we work on our state plan for ESSA.
Isn't there a state board resolution that tells the CD they're not allowed to affect accreditation status by parent opt-out?
Yeah, and I think that's where, if they actually have the documentation for the parents, then that's how they'll work around that. But I think it's with, there's, absent that documentation is where they executed that decision. Yeah.
Just on the opt-out, one thing it might be worth considering, and as a parent, I have sort of two hats on this, because I don't know how I really feel about this, but not having the park testing adjacent to spring break. Now, had I known last year that the testing was the week before spring break, maybe I would have planned a longer trip, I don't know, but if you are looking for more kids to test, that's certainly a tricky decision for parents.
As you probably know, the window's established by the state as to when we can administer the test, and we've chosen not to move our spring break. Some districts have, we have not, because it aligns with universities. And so, but it does, what you described is what happens. So we've chosen to leave spring break in alignment with university's spring break, and consequently, it does fall within the testing window. There's still adequate days to do it, but it does, yeah, it does bump up again, plus it gives us a little less flexibility.
Richard Shelley? Sorry.
Thank you very much for putting the technology discussion so soon after we had our meeting. It's going to be really helpful. If there's any way that we can get more information on what the finance, what the budget implications might be or what the needs are, so that we can really start thinking about the budget for next year, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I think Andrew plans to give an overview of the budget as it is and what we anticipate coming, so I think I'll be a part. And obviously, there'll be questions and discussion around that, and it might help inform some future budget discussions as well.
That's it? Richard Shelley?
Thank you.
Well, thank you. We'll move on to public hearing and participation. The board recognizes the value of public comment on issues related to the operation of the schools. To ensure that our meeting is conducted in an orderly manner, we ask that persons who address the board confine your comments to matters that are germane to the business of the school district. Speakers on agenda items will be heard first, followed by those speaking to non-agenda items, and tonight, I think all of our speakers are speaking to non-agenda items. Please limit your presentation to two minutes. If we go over the first hour, which we should not, public comment will continue at the end of the meeting. Recognize that students often attend or view our meetings. Speakers' remarks therefore should be suitable for an audience that includes kindergarten through 12th grade students. The board president may interrupt, warn, or terminate a participant's statement that is unrelated to the business of the district or inappropriate for K-12 students. There's a lighting system on the podium. It starts at green when your two minutes start, it turns yellow when you have 30 seconds remaining, and turns red at the end. When the light turns red, please wrap up your comments so that the board can hear from the maximum number of speakers. Thank you. So we'll start tonight with, I understand that Stephen Glennon and Julia Glennon have switched, have switched order, but Stephen Glennon will come first and then Julia Glennon may speak afterwards.
On May 2nd, at 2:30 PM, our daughter was threatened with a knife by another student at a BVSD high school. As I'm sure you're aware, the school's response to this incident was to suspend the student for five days and then to readmit him to the school. At court, the student pleaded guilty to felony menacing with a deadly weapon, an offense with one to two years in jail if charged as an adult. As a juvenile, he is under probation currently. Under BVSD policies, the student should have been expelled from the school. He has not been. We have to, had to undergo the formal complaint proceedings, which is why we are here today. We've been informed by the Assistant Superintendent during this complaint process that the student has been transferred to another BVSD high school. However, this letter omitted to state that he could and is still attending after-school activities at our daughter's school. This means that our daughter, the victim, needs to be off the school premises by 4:45 and cannot socialize with her friends who participate in the same school after-school activities as the perpetrator. We've appealed this to the level of the superintendent and have provided him with court recordings of the proceedings. We have yet to receive a timely response under the public complaint policy, KER. Our daughter is unconditionally the victim in this situation. She has a right to attend high school without fear of the perpetrator and without social impact caused by the school district favoring the educational desires of the perpetrator. Remember, he chose to bring a knife to school to threaten our daughter with premeditation and proceeded to threaten her with that knife. We respectfully ask that the board confirm that the perpetrator of this crime is expelled from the high school, that his expulsion is complete, including after-school activities, and that he will not be readmitted to the high school while our daughter is attending, pursuant to BVSD policy, JGD, JGE.
Julia Glennon?
Our daughter didn't ask to be the victim. It is not something that you can ever prepare for in life. She was trying to protect her friend from harm after she herself had been pestered and stalked by the same student for over a year. She has the right to attend school and any after-school activities in pursuit of her dreams without fear of retribution or social stigma. It is a disgrace to let this situation continue because of negligence, lack of leadership, and the wishy-washy enforcement of policies. In the last month, our daughter has been told by an educator not to communicate with her friends and pressured to leave during a homecoming game she was attending in Boulder. On another occasion, by an educator in the same department, she was told to leave the classroom or the hallway that she was in when she was talking to one of her friends. The judge specifically stated that our daughter is not to be inconvenienced by the actions or desires of the perpetrator. She is expected by the educators to be off the school premises by 4:45 each day. In other words, you may not participate in any after-school activities. If that is not victimization, then I don't know what is. In addition, what message do we send to the perpetrator, to other students, and especially to our daughter, when we allow a student who wielded a knife to continue to participate in his favored after-school activity? The safety of our children is not optional. Perpetrators of these crimes need to understand that there are real consequences for them. And again, we respectfully ask that the board confirm that the perpetrator is expelled from the high school, that expulsion is complete, including after-school activities, and that he will not be readmitted while our daughter is attending, pursuant to BVSD policy, JGD, JGE. Thank you for listening.
Our next speaker is Tina Mew.
Members of the board, I'm Tina Mew, President of the Boulder Valley Education Association, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. In conversation with many of you, you've expressed the need to hear from teachers at your school board meetings, the need to hear from our professional educators to inform your decisions, and to have a broader understanding than what you can glean from the few individuals who speak during public comment. With that in mind, I am pleased that you'll hear from several BVA members tonight about the thoughtful decision to move toward mixed-level instruction of language arts. I've taken a look at the petition that may be shared with you about this topic. I've read the comments from parents in that community. I appreciate the need to more clearly inform parents about what we need to do to achieve our success effect goals and the need to welcome parents to join us in these efforts. You'll hear from these educators about the need to align their curriculum with our BVSD values, values like societal inequities and unique learning needs will not be barriers to student success. And we respect the inherent value of each student and incorporate the strengths and diversity of students, families, staff, and communities. Our professional association supports the professional judgment of our BVSD educators and the serious scholarship that they apply to decisions involving instruction. We support our building administrators and our district-level staff who work in concert with our teachers to ensure that decisions such as this one about curriculum are made in the best interest of all students. We support representative governing bodies like our school accountability committees. We support decisions that are aligned with our success effect. We support good process and thoughtful movement toward equity, even in the face of the resistance that sometimes comes when you move toward equity. I thank these BVA members for their willingness to share their expertise with you tonight, and may this be the beginning of much more regular input to you from BVSD educators. Thank you.
Krista St. Charles.
My name is Krista St. Charles, and I teach language arts at Centennial Middle School. I am here to present information about our language arts program on behalf of Amy M. Austin, Mo Breed, Quinn Daly, Karina Duhadway, Josh Feiger, Jason Jaguerre, John Georgitis, Daniel Lehman, Kristen Nielsen, Colleen Rosato, myself, Debbie Valette, Katie Volkmar, and Kristen Westman. Our team is committed to providing the best education for all students. We strive to create confident, caring, and curious learners. To do this, we analyze our teaching and work to integrate substantive research into our practice. For years, we've agreed as a team that mixed ability classes result in the most growth for all students. We reached this conclusion after considerable discussion, research, and critical analysis. We drew from many sources during this decision-making process, including district-led professional development and rigorous peer-reviewed studies. Institutions like the National Education Association support integrated classrooms, and we know that heterogeneous groupings align with the goals for the success effect and with 21st century learner standards. Our findings can be summarized by Jenny Oakes of Foundational Voice in Education. She concludes in her book Keeping Track that tracking brings with it very different expectations for achievement, access to subject matter, and critical learning opportunities. These disparate expectations, access, and resources have a predictable effect on student learning. Low-track students fall further behind. After years of work, we approached our administrator, Ms. Ellis, in February of 2016. She was receptive to our ideas, and we moved forward. Our team met with district specialists to plan effective differentiation in reading, writing, listening, and speaking. We designed an advanced curriculum to challenge all students. Since August, we've seen our vision come to life in the hearts and minds of our kids. Today, we strongly believe that our model fosters growth in all students, from those working below grade level to those working far above. At Centennial, we believe that all students can learn. We believe that all students have a right to equal opportunities with challenging materials and advanced expectations. We believe in BVSD's continued leadership and educational innovation, and most importantly, we believe in delivering the best education we can for all the students we serve. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. St. Charles. Our next speaker is Monica Breed.
Members of the board, my name is Mo Breed, and I teach language arts at Centennial Middle School. I want to echo everything that Krista just shared with you and reiterate that it was a thoughtful process, an informed decision that was communicated with all stakeholders. This is the right change and the change that we needed to make. I come from a long line of public school educators who wove their deep belief and trust in public school education and what it represents into the fabric of my life. I have come to believe that education should hinge on a depth and breadth of research with respect to what works for all learners and that this research should inform best instructional delivery methods for students. The National Education Policy Center clearly indicates that rather than achieving its purported goal to tailor instruction to the diverse needs of students, tracking has, over decades of extensive research, been repeatedly found to be harmful to students enrolled in lower tracks and to provide no significant advantages for higher-track students. Additionally, there's overwhelming research finding that tracking stratifies students by race and parental wealth. In comparison, when high-quality, enriched curriculum is provided to all students, the effect is to benefit both high-achieving and low-achieving students. The research is clear, and as a district, our mandate should be to do what is most effective for all learners by paying attention to current research and best practices and allowing both to inform how our schools and instructional practices progress. If not, we cannot fulfill the mission of our district to create challenging, meaningful, and engaging learning opportunities so that all children can thrive and be prepared for successful, civically engaged lives. As a teacher, part of my job is to make sure all students have a voice, and that's why I'm here tonight. I believe that this change aligns with the mission of our district and makes us a better place for everyone. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Breed. And our final speaker tonight is Jonathan Wright.
Good evening, board. So mine, I suppose, is the last polished but evidence-based report out. So I have been asked in by the teachers at Centennial Middle School to help support them in their process. I currently have a dual role. I teach language arts at Boulder High School. Currently, I'm teaching AP Lang and Comp, but I've been in Boulder Valley for 18 years, 20 years teaching, and during that time, I've taught every level from third grade up now to AP Lang at Boulder High. And so as such, I've also, for the last four years, been working as a literacy specialist for the secondary department. And I was asked in last April to support Centennial teachers as they move toward this process, very thoughtfully, and as you could tell from their speeches, doing lots of research and also seeking out professional growth opportunities. So what I did when we went last April 23rd is we looked at data collecting on assessment, instructional practices, culture, and the content, and went into a lot of work of making sure that this was done in a way that would serve the needs of all students. We further went and looked into assessment, looking at such questions, at what makes something advanced? How much work must be done to be considered advanced in advanced LA? What might tiered assignments look like? What might rubric look like to make sure all students are being supported and challenged at the same time? And what role might redos or standards-based instruction place in this? All of these issues were looked at deeply to make sure that our students are getting the best education possible, regardless of what level they're currently in. The other thing I'd like to point out about these teachers at Centennial that earns my utmost respect is they also participate in the ELA Cohort Program, which is a self-selected professional development program that allows them to work every two weeks with a literacy specialist in their classroom for observations and follow-up meetings, and then also, they go to PD every month in two full days outside of school, just showing their absolute dedication to meeting the needs of these students, both advanced and otherwise.
Thank you very much. That concludes public participation tonight. I'll just comment that the board does not respond to public participation, but individual board members may respond in their comments. And with that, we'll move on to board communication. Does anybody have anything for board communication tonight? Kathy?
I was remiss in my last opportunity for board communication to not thank Sandy for inviting us to the I Have a Dream Foundation luncheon, and so I just wanted to say thank you. It was an amazing event, a lot of energy, some really wonderful programs and children that were being honored, as well as the people who were putting that on. Apparently, one of the largest I Have a Dream Foundation subgroups in the country, and just to see, they had one of the students who had graduated up on stage with his whole family, and it was just a wonderful event. So I just wanted to say thank you for including us and kudos to that program for all the good work they do. Then last Monday, I was able to go to the Casby Regional Conference for our area, and that was an interesting meeting. We learned a little about the legislative platform going forward, what other districts are facing, had some good conversations about how to make Casby more responsive to its members, and so it was a nice gathering in Golden and a nice opportunity to get together with other board members and find out their successes as well as their challenges. So to the extent, that was my first one that I've been able to attend, and it made me look forward to the annual Casby Conference that's coming up in December. I also want to thank the parents for coming forward tonight and the teachers. As the head of the Teachers Union said, Ms. Mew, I really think it's great when teachers and others come forward and help us with our decision-making and give us kind of that view of what's going on out in the schools, because we can't get out there as often as we would like, and so thank you so much for coming. I would recommend that if you haven't read the work of Carol Burris, she is a leader in the non-tracking. She non-tracked her school on Long Island, and you guys are nodding, so you're familiar with her work, and also the work of Dr. Kevin Wallner, you mentioned, at National Education Policy Center, which she's the executive director of. So at my youngest daughter's middle school last year, they did a similar attempt, and I can say that some of the projects that they were able to undertake by combining classrooms and doing multi-level classroom, they were able to offer a lot of different kinds of programs that I didn't think they would have been able to offer had they followed a more traditional track. It'd be interesting to see how that's going this year, but last year, it was interesting to watch. They had things like Google Hour and all sorts of innovative things they were trying to accomplish by looking at it outside-the-box kind of way of teaching language arts and social studies. So thank you for coming, and I look forward to figuring out how we can support these efforts as we go forward. So I think that's all I have to say, so thank you very much, Jenny.
Anyone else? Tina?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what Bruce said, thanking Richard, Garcia, and all the people who put together the Latino Day. I was able to attend, and I participated in one of the breakout sessions and heard directly from some of our Latino parents about their experiences with bilingual educational programs in the district. It was a really great event. It was a lot of fun to be able to go. And I also thank the people who showed up and shared their stories with us, and it is great to hear from parents and hear directly from teachers. It's really something we hear very, as Tina said, very infrequently do we hear directly from teachers, and hearing directly about all the good work that's happening in our district. And the last thing I'll say is about every year, we have one board meeting on a Jewish High holiday. Tonight's that night. It's the start of Yom Kippur, so I'm actually going to be leaving, and that's it. Thank you.
Anyone else? Tom?
So I want to thank Tina Mew and all BVA members that came forward to talk to us about what's going on in language arts instruction. I have a feeling we're going to hear a little more about this in the future, so I'm very anxious to, and if you care to send me a few links on some of the research, I'd love to read through some of that, so thank you again. Also, I'd like to thank the parents coming forward on our policy KE and KE-R. As you know, we have, excuse me, policies regarding public complaints, and you're working up through that policy and regulation. I guess you're with Dr. Messenger now, and there are time limits associated with that that you're aware of, so I assume Dr. Messenger will be getting back to you very soon. You have the right, if you want to appeal his decision, directly to the Board of Education and the and the policy spells out how you do that. So thank you for coming and talking to us about that. Also, I'd like to acknowledge all the beautiful artwork in here, and unfortunately, I was unable to attend the reception, but it's always good to see the artwork here by students in our boardroom. Last thing, I'd like to acknowledge some work by our HR staff, particularly Benefits Director Jeanne Aguilar, and her staff in organizing Nine Health Fair. And I know a lot of teachers came forward and got blood tests with our free, no-cost blood test. I think Arapo Campus is one of the sites here, so just real close. So thanks again. It's a great opportunity for our employees.
Thank you, Tom. Richard or Shelley?
Thank you. I want to thank the teachers for coming forward tonight. I really appreciate your report. I'm just curious if this is going on at the other middle schools or not, so I'd like to learn a little bit more about that. The parents, I'd like to thank you very much for bringing forward your comments, your report to us. And I also want to thank Dr. Messenger and all the staff that were present from BVSD at the Latino Parents Summit. It was great to see all the support that Latino parents were getting from staff and from the community, because it does display something that there is some sincerity on the part of the Boulder Valley School District in terms of really reaching out to our Latino parents, and we hope to make this an annual event, so stay tuned. Thank you.
Shelley, do you have anything?
Yeah, I'd also like to thank the parents and teachers for coming forward tonight. It's always, you know, so nice and very important to hear other people's perspectives on all of these issues. I will be really interested in hearing how the, sort of, the non-tracking program or whatever it should be called, actually looks in terms of metrics, to see how those kids actually perform in a non-tracked environment versus a tracked environment. We're trying to put much more emphasis on measurements in the district, so it would be really helpful to have that at some point, and I hope that somehow we're looking at that. Speaking of metrics, I think a week or so ago, Bruce, you sent the district parent survey out to all of us, and when I went through that, I noticed there were a couple areas where we maybe should be looking at, you know, how to improve some of what parents are talking about. For example, more budget information was one. I think school maintenance was another one, and I think continuous improvement or quality kinds of issues was a third one. And I'm just wondering what we're doing when we get the feedback like that, because in line with this wanting more measurements, you know, here we have a measurement, and I'm just wondering, you know, what kind of action the district plans on taking, if any, to address those issues.
So I can quickly respond, Jenny, if that's appropriate. I just, in recent years, the way that survey data has been used is to inform the school-based improvement planning, so I would just say it's used at varying levels, and I think, as we've discussed before, we are looking at potentially using replacement survey in the future. So the actual administration of that survey in the last couple of years has been optional for schools, so that's why you'll see some differentiation in levels of participation in schools that participated. But the purpose is to inform school-based planning around school improvement planning. And so then they, when they readminister the survey, to see if they've made progress, if they developed a goal around that area. So that's how it's been used in recent years.
Okay. Well, some of those results are district-level.
Right, and so then should inform that work if it's at district level, right.
So will we be looking at those categories, for example?
So I think what more likely will occur is discussion around new survey and data collection tools that will be coming forward as a part of our common assessment, and then the intent would be that would inform, if we use new instrumentation, to inform both school and district-level planning. So I don't know how much will be going back to the old data, but I think we'll be collecting new data going forward. There's some concern about the reliability and validity of that instrument, and so rather than going backwards, the intent is to develop a new survey tool, which is in progress.
And will it cover things like how parents feel about the budget information they're getting or the maintenance at their schools?
I think if it doesn't, then there may be other ways we would collect that information.
Okay, right, thanks. And then I just had a question about the privacy policy for you, Kathy. I'm wondering if Casby had any response, or while you were at the convention, have you had an opportunity to talk about that with anyone?
My bad, Shelley. They sent me an email a few days ago that I need to forward on to you that has their draft policy. So yes, they're working on it, and I did forward your information to them ahead of time, and if they're working on it, so I'll send that to you.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate that. Oh, and I just wanted to say that I sent you all an email telling you that the KC Indoor Air Quality Committee has sort of wrapped up their activities for now, and they feel comfortable with what the district's doing at KC. And what they're asking for is the district's help in pulling together a summary of sort of the history of that issue and the findings of the district maintenance people to just kind of wrap it up and put that report on the district website. So Bruce, do we have the right people helping out with that summary? I think the goal was to get it up before Thanksgiving, if possible.
I followed up with Susan Cousins following that exchange, and I think it's in draft form, and there are people's eyes on it right now, so I think they're working on getting closer to it.
Great, thank you, thank you. That's it.
Well, thanks for updating us on the KC Air Quality Committee, Shelley, and I look forward to further discussion about the district-wide indoor air quality later on this evening, committee later on this evening, or perhaps not, it's on the consent agenda. And then I think I heard a couple of people mention questions about the way we do language arts differentiation in our middle schools, and so perhaps it would be appropriate to submit an RFI or something, and I tried to capture it for agenda setting, although, but it might be that an RFI is the way to go initially, at least. And as for myself, I would also like to thank the teachers for coming out tonight and talking to us, and parents as well. And we can now move on to, if everybody has had, nobody has anything else, then I think we can move on to, let's see, action items, consent grouping. On tonight's consent grouping, we have item 6.1 Personnel Items, item 6.2 Approval of Minutes, September 13th, 2016 Special Meeting, item 6.3 Approval of Minutes, September 27th, 2016 Special Meeting, item 6.4 Approval of Minutes, September 27th, 2016 Regular Meeting, item 6.5 Acceptance of Donation, Eldorado K-8, item 6.6 Acceptance of Donation, Flat Irons Elementary, item 6.7 Acceptance of Donation, Louisville Elementary, item 6.8 Acceptance of Resolution 1631, Family and School Partnership and Education Month, item 6.9 Boundary Change for the Erie K-8 School, item 610 Final Acceptance of Bond-Funded Roof Replacement Project at Netherland Elementary School, item 611 Formation of District Indoor Air Quality Committee, item 612 Ratification of Negotiated Agreement between the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Classified Association affiliated with the Colorado Education Association and the National Education Association. Melissa, you're going to have to help me. Should I ask if people want to pull things first, or should I get a motion first?
Oh, get a motion.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Kathy, do I have a second? Shelley, is there anything that should be pulled, that anybody would like pulled from this agenda?
I just have a procedural question on one agenda item, and as the one on the, what is it? Which one is it? Oh, the Personnel Item Agenda.
Sure, yes.
It's just a procedural question. I don't want to pull anything out of there. I just want to find out if, because I did go through, and I noticed some resignations there that I have some concerns about. Do we do any exit interviews of people that resigned from our district?
The question was whether we conduct exit interviews when individuals resign.
Yes, so you've got exit interviews. They're not formal yet, they're informal at this point. It's part of a success effect, I'd be able to.
So Bruce, when can we, when can we, as a board, ask questions around some of the individuals that have resigned from?
Well, I think if there are questions you specifically have, it'd probably be best to. Just direct those to me, Richard, and we can try to respond to those. I think as a part of our regular updates for the Board of Education around the success effect, the strategic plan in the area of talent, one of the things we talked about was our recruitment efforts and success with that, but there are other strategies that are being implemented in that initiative, and Shelley just described one of those. So if it was a more general question, I think that would be an opportunity to ask about that, Richard, but if there are specific ones, I probably would ask that we, to be of a confidential nature, you'd just contact me directly, okay?
Okay, thank you.
So I didn't hear anybody pull anything. If anybody else has any other, is that correct? So does anybody, does anybody have any questions about any of the items? Kathy?
I was just hoping, Bruce, you could, since this is the first contract I've seen between an employee's organization and the board, if you could just kind of briefly walk through what the process was that got us to where we are.
So before you is item 612, which is the Boulder Valley School District and the Boulder Valley Classified Association Agreement, BBCEA, and I'm going to ask if Assistant Superintendent Shelley Langraft would make her way to the podium and maybe just give a brief overview, Shelley, if you would, about, the question I heard was around process, not necessarily language within the tentative agreement, just a little bit about the process you worked through, if you wouldn't mind, Shelley. Shelley Langraft.
So our process, we began negotiations last spring, early winter, late winter, and we have a negotiations team from the association as well as the district, representatives from schools, departments within both units. And so basically, the process is we bring interest forward, and then we discuss those interests. Sometimes it's a matter of doing some small group discussion, doing some breakouts. They bring that information back, either looking for data or discussions or input, and then we come back to the negotiations table frequently and talk about resolutions, whether something needs to be adjusted in the contractual language, if it needs to be an MOU for further work. And the process has been very collaborative over the last couple of years, since I've been involved. I can speak to that personally. And then this year, we just had some change and some leadership, and so they wanted to review the information with members this fall, and that's why, and they have a two-week window that they have the ratification, so that was why we came to the ratification tonight instead of last spring, which is always best hopes.
Thanks.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Shelley.
Anybody else have any questions about any items on the consent agenda? Well, hearing none. Laura, could you call the roll?
Bell Val.
Yes.
Benford.
Yes.
Fuqua. Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Marquess. Ann Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. So our next item is the Casby Fall Delegate Assembly, and so on your agenda tonight is attached both the updated booklet, which has a resolution 19 that was not in last week's agenda. That was just an inadvertent slip up on my part. I forwarded the wrong booklet. And then you should also have in front of you an additional item 20, which I just received today from Casby, which is a resolution from the Elizabeth School District that was forwarded without a recommendation from the Legislative Resolutions Committee. And then also attached to your agenda is a draft resolution, which I'm going to take a minute to open, which authorizes me to be the voting delegate. I'm planning to attend as our voting delegate on Saturday, and sort of sets out my attempt at a, I took a run at what I thought would be a good way to authorize me to act on behalf of the board. I am going to make one amendment, or I'm going to suggest one amendment, since we're appointing me, I'd like to appoint, I'd like to amend it to appoint Kathy Gebhardt as the alternative, I mean, as the alternate in case I'm hit by a truck on the way up or something.
Well, hopefully that won't be the case.
Well, you know, it would be terrible for us not to be, you know, for us not to be represented. So that's, and I guess I need a motion, don't I, before we discuss it? So could I have a motion, please?
Second.
Kathy, a second? Okay. And is my amendment part of it, or is that?
Make a motion to amend.
Do I have to make a motion to amend? Okay.
Or if you want to state what your motion is.
I'd like to state that, I'd like to amend this motion to include Kathy Gebhardt as the alternate in case I'm unable to serve for some reason. Do I need a second? No, probably not, do I? Okay. So is there any, having gotten everything on the table there, is there any discussion?
So point of clarification, what we're discussing is whether, right now, to make you the.
No, no, I don't think so. I think we're discussing the whole motion, the whole motion, which would be, am I not?
Are you making your motion to approve the resolution?
Yes, yes.
With an amendment?
Yes.
And then you'll need a second for that.
Okay, could I get a, okay, Kathy, thank you. I actually have one more amendment. I'm going to, should I wait? I'm sorry, Melissa, you look.
Well, I think it's fine to state your motion as you want it acted upon, and then you can second on that.
So I'm going to suggest that we oppose the resolution, Resolution 20 that's in front of us, add that to, so I'd like to approve the motion in its current form with the exception that Kathy Gebhardt would be named as the alternate, and that we oppose resol, that I have, that the delegate should oppose Resolution 20, which is a resolution from the Elizabeth School District that would earmark some state funding to pay teachers in districts where teachers are not paid particularly well, essentially. So if people would like to take a minute to look at this, that's fine. And could I get a second, I guess? Well, thank you, Shelley. Seconded by Shelley. People ready? So is there any discussion? Tom?
So maybe you can tell us why number 20, that you would suggest we oppose that?
Okay, so 20 says, "Casby supports adequate funding to, state funding to allow local boards to achieve teacher salary equity in Colorado, especially for educators working in districts paying the lowest 10% average salary." And I'm going to suggest that we oppose this, not because I'm opposed to paying teachers, which I'm not. I agree that for many school districts, teacher pay is a real issue. However, this would be an earmark of state education funding, which we've tended to oppose in the past. We've just tended to ask the state for adequate funding in general. And it's also, I mean, it's a little tricky, because what teachers pay their, I mean, that's all, the districts pay their teachers in part because, the way they do, in part because of the funding they receive from the state, but there are also internal decisions that go into that, and this, and I think this motion doesn't really address those internal decisions, and so I just assume not see the money, you know, I support adequate funding, which I believe the Casby legislative platform does as well, but I think this would be an inappropriate earmark of funding. Any other comments?
I just don't read it as earmarking, so do you have an alternative that you would support that would help districts who haven't, don't have mill levy dollars and don't have local dollars and can't pay their teachers even close to a living wage? I'm torn on this one, because I know there are teachers in rural school districts who their families qualify for free and reduced lunch because they make so little.
Oh.
And so, so I don't read this as saying we would have to earmark it. I think it raises an interesting and important question, and so I'm just struggling with what the right way to proceed with this would be, so.
Bruce, would you like to respond to that?
So this comes out of the Elizabeth School District and has generated quite a bit of conversation, and I would say generally doesn't enjoy support among most school districts, in part because the decision as to how budgets are allocated is a local decision, and so if a board chooses to take precious resources and put it in sourries or others, really should be a local decision. And so I think, to your point, Kathy, just to advocate for adequate funding for all school districts, then the assumption would be then they can make the decision how they want to pay their teachers more or less or their other employees. This is a symptom in part because of inadequate funding. It's also a symptom in part.
It's also a symptom in part of local boards choosing not to compensate their employees as well. So to have a standard of 10%, it's really hard to determine how one got in that group. Was it because they didn't have adequate funding or because they chose to spend their money in other ways? So I think advocating for adequate funding, which is in our platform, which we'll visit later this fall, and I think is also consistent with where Casby is. So I don't know if a separate resolution is needed for that. I think it already exists within the resolutions. So that'd be my take, and that's the conversations the superintendent's have had on this one.
And that's the conversation we had on legislative resolutions as well. Any other comments? Well, hearing none, I think we have a motion in front of us. Laura, do you want to let us read it? Can you read the motion that we've got in front of us, since I amended it twice? I apologize.
The motion is to approve Resolution 16-33 with amendments to add Kathy Gebhardt as an alternate voting delegate and to oppose Resolution 20.
Okay, so, Richard?
Could we separate those out? Could we just vote on the first one in terms of appointing Kathy as an alternate? Vote on that one, and then vote on the second one afterwards? The reason for that is because I don't think I agree with this, I don't want to oppose this particular resolution myself.
Oh, okay, okay. Can I, I can do that, can't I? Can we, can we vote on the amendment separately?
Yes, so.
Do we need a motion to separate them?
To restate the question, right.
Okay.
So do you have a second? So Richard is making an amendment?
He wants to.
To amend, to change the question to the first two parts.
So we'd have, we'd have to have a second to that one, and then we'd have to vote on that? Okay, does somebody want to second Richard's motion? Kathy? Okay, so now, now we vote on whether to separate that out. Could you call the roll on that, Laura?
Okay, the motion on the table is to separate the motion to approve Resolution 1633 with amendments to add Kathy Gebhardt as an alternate voting delegate and to oppose Resolution 20. Bell Val.
Okay.
Do you want to separate?
So, so could we just pull out Amendment 20, Richard? Would that do what you, so can we vote on everything but, but the resolution regarding Amen, the amendment regarding Resolution 20? So can, that, so my understanding is what we're doing is voting on everything but our decision to oppose or support Resolution 20.
So the question on the table is just to split it, and then we'll call each question.
Okay, so what are we, so?
So if you vote yes, you'd be separating them.
Okay, yes.
Okay. Bell Val.
Yes.
Benford. Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Ann Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
So can?
Can vote on the motion as amended to have Kathy. So back to the original motion, plus Kathy as the alternate.
Okay, so we're voting on everything but the decision on whether to support Resolution 20 or not, right now. Laura, could you, and there's no other further conversation on that. Laura, could you call the roll, please?
Do we need a first and a second on this? Or what does that leave her back to?
So.
Okay.
I think the question's already, it's been split, and there's already been a motion approved.
Okay.
Just call them.
Okay.
Thank you for clarifying, Laura.
Bell Val.
Yes.
Benford.
Yes.
Garcia.
Yes.
Gebhardt.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now on to Resolution, whether to support Resolution 20 or not, which is all that remains. Could I get some, I mean, is there any further discussion on that? Richard, do you have any comments you'd like to, any, okay, anybody else have any further?
I'm still just really torn because I know that these are internal decisions, but they're internal decisions in districts that have very reduced amounts of money coming in. And so I'm torn between not wanting to interfere, but also I think this is one of our most important issues in attracting and retaining teachers. So I don't know how to separate those out in my own head, so that's why I'm struggling with this. Because, like I said, I don't see this, I do understand that it opens up a potential can of worms, but I don't see the actual language of the resolution requiring the earmarking. I just don't read it that way, and I could be mistaken on it, but I don't read the resolution that way, so that's, that's why I'm struggling.
So the existing resolution, particularly Resolution 19, which, which, excuse me, I'm going to open up my booklet for a minute, which talks about the need to have adequate, have a state funding formula that, Resolution 19 was submitted by the Legislative Resolutions Committee in, partly in an attempt to deal with this and other issues that had been brought forward, 18 particularly, but also 20. And, and the purpose of Resolution 19 as put forward by the Legislative Resolutions Committee was to deal with both of these issues, as I recall the conversation. And Resolution 19, which we will be supporting, urges the adoption of a Colorado School Finance Act with additional funding that addresses the lack of adequacy and equity in our current system. So it would, it's meant to be a more general resolution that encourages the state to, to provide for these, these needs and, you know, as they exist in different school districts, which would include the need to provide adequate funding for, for districts to pay teachers. I believe that Casby recognizes the importance of this issue, and that the Legislative Resolutions Committee recognized the importance of this issue, and it's not that we don't think, that we don't understand that our districts are having trouble hiring and retaining teachers, and that, and that we don't want a solution for that. We just felt like the more general language of 19 would help us address that, and leave, you know, and without potentially impinging on the local control issues that might be a danger in the language of Resolution 20. Yes, sir?
So historically, the funding for small rural districts in Colorado has always been an issue for, for those, and they're small, and they don't have much of a property tax base, and, and so it just compounds a problem. I think the efforts have been, in the past, via the school finance formula, the various factors to address the small schools, but, but it's, it doesn't appear to be adequate. Now, Bruce, can you respond to that?
So one of the variables, one of the factors in the School Finance Act is size. So small districts do get an increased amount of per student funding compared to larger school districts. So a size factor is incorporated. So much of the work around the Superintendent's Coalition on this discussion is that if we were funding the negative factor, that the size factor actually would generate enough resources into those smaller districts to get towards adequacy. So that is already incorporated in the funding. One of the challenges we have, whether it's cost of living, or poverty, or size, the factors in the School Finance Act, all of them don't have the, the resulting benefit of those factors is lost with the present underfunding of schools with the negative factor, because those are not being recognized at the level that they could be going forward. As we work towards adequate funding, and some of the adequacy funding study is, is that if those factors were fully funded, would that generate enough resource to small districts and high-poverty districts to allow them to meet the needs of students? I think the challenge with this particular resolution is what about those that are 12% and 15%? Because I assure you, they are equally as inadequate. In fact, you could take the lower quartile of all school districts funding teacher salaries, and it's not just small rural districts that find themselves in that category. So I think that's the reason probably Casby has, through their legislative process, advocated for, working towards adequacy for all school districts. But there is a size factor in funding in those that are almost twice as high, but still, there are just, if you have class sizes of eight, because that's all the students there are, there are just some inefficiencies. And so that's how the size factor is designed. But just because of the negative factor, we're underfunding it such a large degree, they're not getting a return on that like they would be if we were not, if we didn't have the present negative factor of a billion dollars.
The, I'm reading Resolution 19, and if you were able to add the first part of the sentence in terms of supporting adequate state funding to allow school boards to achieve teacher salary equity in Colorado without, and then take that out, take the 10% out, and then go with just that one piece there as a resolution. Remove the 10%, or at least you as our, as our designee or our delegate to go down and talk on behalf of our supporting, if, I think we, I would support, "Casby supports adequate state funding to allow local boards to achieve teacher salary equity in Colorado." Period.
So are you making a motion?
Well, I don't know if I could make a motion to change this resolution, because it's not mine, but I.
Yeah, so, so, but the, so, so you, you could urge me to support an amendment that would do that, or an amendment to Resolution 20, I think. I'm a little, I'm a little.
I don't know if you're allowed to wordsmith when you get down there. I don't know what the process is when you get over there.
There is a process for, for offering amendments from the floor, and I, I just am inclined to urge us not to do that, because I, again, I think that we, we all recognize the problem with teacher salaries and, and the purpose of, but, but Casby also has, and we as a local school district also have a pretty strong interest in protecting our local control over our budgets. And I think that, that we would find ourselves in a funny place if we were to urge, and we've traditionally said we really don't want additional funding coming into the schools earmarked in any particular way. And Kathy, I get that you don't think this says that, but, but I think the, the danger, there's a real danger of that in this particular motion, because it, it's looking for funding specifically to pay teachers, and again, different districts are making their own decisions about how, how to compensate employees, and I am reluctant to urge Casby to support legislation that would interfere with those decisions. When, when we all support adequate funding, which would allow districts to make the decision to better, better pay their teachers. Yes.
I have a question for you, Dr. Messenger. Has there been any analysis done on what the fiscal costs of this would be, just to even address the lower 10%? Or do we have any sense of a range of what the fiscal impact would be?
I think there has been some analysis, and I was involved in a conversation in July on some numbers associated with this. I don't recall off the top of my head. I mean, tens of millions of dollars. I mean, I think you know that in recent years, we've actually directed money towards rural and high-poverty districts as a part of the School Finance Act, so above and beyond, and we've had the Denver Area Superintendent's have supported that as well. I think one of the things, if you look at the rationale for 19, in addition to the language, I think it does talk about the factors that Tom asked about, and really recognizing that if we were able to adequately fund or get rid of the negative factor, it doesn't directly say that, but that's certainly what the intent of this is. One of the things that the Superintendent's Group, when we meet in two weeks, we're going to be looking at again, is that if, if we were to fully fund the present School Finance Act, and so basically theoretically get rid of the negative factor, how do those play? And then is that, because it could be any one of these factors. This was, you know, was over 20 years ago that the School Finance Act was created, and so looking at the weighting of the factors and really working with Tracy Rainey and Justin Silverstein to look at the existing factors, I mean, you have to make some assumptions that we need new revenue, because without new revenue, we really can't do any of this, including this. I mean, this will not be actively supported, because it's basically not going to support the, the elimination of the negative factor. It's going to differentiate the funding, so, but I think the rationale might address some of the concerns that have been brought up today. But I don't know the exact dollar about it.
Weren't most of those dollars you just identified that went to rurls and at-risk one-time dollars, so they couldn't go towards salaries?
They were, because that's what was available, right.
Right, so they couldn't go towards teacher salaries. They went towards more one-time expenditures.
This district has used dollars that way. Yeah, there's risk associated with it, for sure.
I think I could support what you said, Richard, which is, and I still, it just says especially, so it's a target, but if you take that out, I think it makes it a little more palatable, and I just still don't see it as pulling anything out other than highlighting the problems that we have around teacher salaries. But I get the challenge it creates, but I think trying to support this issue, even if we're going to be successful on the floor highlights a, a very important issue for our discussion.
So let me make a suggestion, that rather than supporting this motion, that as a delegate, we could not, I could oppose this motion, but I could speak in favor of the issue, I mean, I could recognize the importance of the issue. It's possible to say we get the importance of the issue without supporting this particular Which is really not, I mean, it's, it's not really, it's an important issue, it's not really an important issue to Boulder Valley exactly either, so. Yes.
It's an important issue for a group that's called in themselves Lift One, Lift All, and it's all about equity. And I really would support some language that supports rural school districts that are suffering, especially when they, you know, when you can't find teachers, they can't hire teachers. And if, if this would work on that, in that pursuit, then I'm all in favor of it. And I think if you take the, the last part of it out, or at least advocate for taking that last part out, as one of the, as a delegate.
I mean, I need some kind of proposed language for us to, I need some proposed language to vote on.
Do we have a motion on the floor?
Sure, yeah.
So when it says, so you're going to cut off the especially for educators working that clause?
Yeah.
Was that your thinking? So when?
At least that last, the, pay the lowest 10% average salary. Because, because I agree with, with what Dr. Messenger said, what about the 10%, or the 11% or the 12%? You know, how do we?
Right. So when they're talking salary equity, how does that work when you're in a rural district and your cost of living is so much lower than what it is to live in Boulder? Like, how exactly, what, how is equity defined when there's a cost of living factor involved here?
So under present statute in Colorado, that is the School Finance Act, in which it looks at multiple areas, including cost of living and size. And so this superintendent has advocated not to mess with the formula, and that's really been what most of the superintendents in the state have represented, is to adequately fund the existing formula, which it takes into account cost of living, risk factors, size. And then if that formula needs to be altered, which we think it may need to be, to weight those factors differently, to consider that also, but not to take any one part, because there's another group that would also approach this, that would look at just the asterisk factors, or just the size, or just the salaries, and so, which we believe will lead to total chaos. So we've actually advocated for honoring the present School Finance Act, adequately funding it, meaning get rid of the negative factor, and then say, do any of these factors need to be weighted more than they are or less than they are? Some would argue we should get rid of the cost of living factor, but those people probably haven't bought a home in Boulder lately. They may be in Yuma, they would find that they're less expensive. And so we've really tried to say, we need to stay together with this and have that analysis. So this kind of a resolution really could cause significant separation, and the money that would go to do this will have to come from somewhere, and most likely it will come from the cost of living factor or size factor, which benefits of Boulder Valley School District. So we've really tried to take a holistic look at this because of the factors that are weighted differently, for good reason.
I definitely agree with that logic, that we could end up with this jigsaw puzzle that's been happening instead of a clean, clean look at this. Yeah.
Kathy?
I just don't think this resolution says that, because it doesn't say take it from existing state funding, so it wouldn't be allocating money from existing state funding. It uses the word adequate state funding, which we don't have. So I just, I think it was, I don't know, I haven't talked to anybody in Elizabeth about this, but it doesn't say, which is what my understanding is of the current attempts to take at-risk funding and others, to do it from the existing state pie. This talks about doing it when you have adequate state funding, so that's.
Speaking to the author of this resolution, Douglas Bissonette, that is not their intent. Their intent is to take it out of the cost of living factor, so, I can just, because I've had that conversation with Douglas, so, but it doesn't exactly say that. But I don't think there's going to be adequate funding, and there may not be enough funding to even keep the negative factor from increasing.
I understand that.
So my worry is that these attempts to peel money out before we get to the negative factor paid up to where it needs to be is, is dangerous for the School Finance Act, is a worry I have.
It doesn't define salary equity, that's my problem with it. Like.
Based on COLA? Based on what? Just the average of what's paid across the state? Like, I mean, it's confusing to me that it's not spelled out better, you know?
Other states, as you know, Shelley, have salary schedules. We don't because of local control. And so some of those states are neighboring states where we lose teachers to those states because they can make a significant amount more money if they go across the borders, if they happen to live, you know, close enough to be able to do that. And I agree. I think it's how, it's, I haven't been through this process before, I think it's really hard because you don't want to be too prescriptive, right? And you want to have enough room that you're not tying hands with people when you draft these. And so I'm just trying to go off the language here, is what I'm trying to go off of. And so I agree with you that how you define that is hard, and if it's coming out of cost of living, I've opposed taking at-risk out of cost of living. If that's what this was saying it was doing, I would oppose it. I just think having the conversation around our teacher salaries is what I'm hoping, and adequate funding is, and since we, you know, it's not just teachers. I also have a hard time with the fact that it's just teachers because paraprofessionals and others, classified staff in the rurals make even less than teachers. So I have a hard time with, with that. I mean, maybe if it just said salary equity or something, it might even be better. I don't know.
Right.
Have there been any discussions around a statewide salary schedule for teachers?
I don't think we can do it with local control in our constitution. I mean, I don't know what Dr. Messenger thinks about that. We, I can tell you that we've, there's a lot of conversations about compensating teachers and what the fair way to do it is and what that looks like, so. But I don't think we've ever really seriously talked about a salary schedule because I just don't think we could implement that in a state like Colorado. Is that a fair?
Well, I think it would be challenging. I mean, Wyoming did it. I would guess Wyoming is no less of a local control state than we are. When I was in Montana and worked on this for over a decade, there was serious conversation in a very local control state in the state of Montana. These rural, isolated school district issues are real in, in the western states, in Colorado included. So I wouldn't, I would say there has been conversation around it again. I think it would not be easy to do. Wyoming clearly has had success with it and has moved to one of the highest paying states in the country as a result of that. So, and you make more if you work as a first-screen teacher in Jackson Hole than you do if you work in Sheridan. So they've created a statewide salary schedule that is sensitive to cost of living.
But don't they also have a bunch of oil and gas money that's being allocated to?
They, they have a severance tax, and the state has rejected them, but their state has a severance tax, and that's how they're funding it, yes.
So, Richard?
So Jenny, as a delegate, and if we strike this resolution, if we, if we oppose this resolution, are you able to say why we oppose it when you go up in front?
Yes, and, and I think, I think, and it has not, yes, I, I can go, I can, if, if I, if I talk, speak to it, I can say-
That we do support adequate state funding to allow-
Right.
Adequate salaries?
Right, yeah. Yeah, I mean, it's, yeah, I can say that. I would be happy to say-
Might well be your testimony on nineteen also, if you choose to testify in support of nineteen.
I would probably, I would probably be more likely to say I support nineteen because, and that it includes our support of all of these issues. And, and I would also say that the logic of the pared-down Resolution booklet has been to, and the logic of CASB over the last few years has been to reduce the number of special asks for money and to just go for an overall adequate funding rather than to peel off separate areas to fund. We've really worked hard not to do that.
I, I like Richard's idea, which is, I would ask as our delegate that you comment on this, so it's not just a flat rejection, that as a board, we had a lengthy discussion about it, and that we support in concept the idea of looking at salary equity, but we just had a hard time with the way that it was framed. And that this, we aren't in a position to be able to really amend it much, but to give the support to the work that they're doing around the salary equity issues, I think that would be an important message to, to give.
I can do that. So Laura, could we have a vote on the motion to oppose Resolution twenty, please? I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
No, I think that is the motion that's on the table still.
I want to amend that motion, which is we oppose it, but with the caveat that we support the work that is being done around salary equity and continue to want to have those discussions around salary assets in the state, so it's not just a flat oppose. I think it needs to be an opposed or a, and further, or but, support that work that is being done around salary equity.
So that's a motion?
That's a motion.
I second it.
Laura, could you vote, could we have a motion, could we vote on the motion to amend the, the, uh?
Okay. So, number one, we're voting on the motion to amend Resolution twenty, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
No, Kathy?
No, we have to-
Okay, the motion to amend Resolution twenty to include a caveat to continue discussions-
That we support discussions. Kathy, you have to say it because it's your motion.
That we support the work around-
Thank you.
Looking to find adequate state funding and studies to look at salary equity. I would want to make it broader than just teacher salary equity, around salary equity. Said, I'm seeing some nods. So I think it, just keep it broader.
But we're still-
We're opposing it, but with the caveat that we support the work that this district has been doing and that others are doing around the issue around salary equity.
Okay.
Okay, I'm going to try to reiterate this. The motion is to oppose Resolution twenty, however, we support the work to continue looking to find salary equity.
Adequate state funding to address the issues of salary equity. Because otherwise it looks like we're just redistributing. And so I don't want, I want to keep those words in there because they are, I think, important.
Okay, I'll try it again. The motion is to oppose Resolution twenty, however, we support the work to continue looking to find adequate state funding to address salary equity.
Laura, could you call the roll, please?
Belvall?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Wait, I think we just voted to amend the motion, didn't we? I, I'm happy if we, if, uh, did we just vote to amend the motion, a motion, or did we vote to pass the motion?
Voted to amend the motion.
So now we need to vote to pass the motion. Now could you call the roll to, on the motion? Now we're voting on the substance of the motion. We've now amended it, so now we need a vote to pass the motion.
Okay, the motion on the table is to pass the amended motion. Belvall?
Yes.
Benford?
Yes.
Garcia?
Yes.
Gebhardt?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Onto the next item, which I, we have no items pulled from consent grouping, so we won't talk about that. The next, we have study items, proposed Boulder Valley school district calendars for 2017, 2018, and 2018, 2019. Dr. Messenger, over to you.
So thank you. As a study item, our plan would bring this back in two weeks for action. So included in your materials is a proposed calendar, as was stated by the chair, that it would be for seventeen, eighteen, and eighteen, nineteen. So Assistant Superintendent Sandy Riplinger, as she has in recent years, led this work and so, and noted in the background are the groups that she has worked with. And so we're pleased to bring this to you as early as we are, because some years it hasn't been this early. And I want to publicly thank Sandy for her work on this proposed calendar and her work over the years on this. So Sandy, if you would?
Sure. Good evening, board members. As Dr. Messenger said, Policy IC, ICA actually asks us to bring this forward by November first, and it's seldom that we're able to do that. But we are bringing this proposed calendar to you. It has been recognized and discussed by our BVSD Instructional Services and Equity Department, by our Human Resources, to make sure that we've got all of the proper days on it, by the BVEA Executive Committee, our parent, our Principal Advisory Council, District Parent Council, and the Teachers Advisory Council. You'll notice, as you look at this calendar, that it's very similar to past years. There are not a lot of changes to it, which is why it was fairly uncomplicated. The two biggest changes is that students start a day earlier on a Wednesday instead of a Thursday. And that actually enables us, as we get through the whole year, to finish by Memorial Day, so that both students and teachers are finished by Memorial Day, which was a goal of ours. And it exchanges what used to be an elementary assessment day only to a district-wide professional development or teacher work day. Those are decided upon by the schools. So it gives the schools flexibility. So we have one hundred and seventy-two student days plus four conference exchange days and one hundred eighty-six days for teachers to be teaching. So those are the two changes this year, and I'm happy to take any questions for clarification about the current calendar.
Kathy?
Just want to say thank you for your work in bringing this forward early. Thank you.
You're welcome. Does anybody else have any questions? Shelley?
Thank you, Sandy. This is such a relief that this is so easy this year.
Oh, I know.
Can you just remind me what the requirement is by the state for student days?
Uh, the requirement for the state is only a hundred sixty days. They actually look for hours and minutes in the day, and so we're far, we far surpass that for the most part. So we do have one hundred seventy-six instructional days. Four of those days are conference exchange days. So where teachers stay in the evening and do parent-teacher conferences, and then they're, they're exchanged for that, for days off. But their, students are in school one hundred seventy-two days.
And is there like a wide range of days across the state with different districts? Like, where do we kind of stand?
Yeah, well, I haven't done an analysis on that lately. I think we're pretty much, as I've pulled other school calendar, or other district calendars, we're pretty much in alignment with other districts around us. Some districts, as I've looked at it, it's just a variety of the way they use it. So some districts, for instance, Thanksgiving week, they'll attend on Monday and Tuesday, where we don't. Those are conference exchange days for us, but they have a fall break, which we don't. So it's very individualized to the district culture, is what I would say.
And does, does the state put a maximum number of days on this, or just a minimum number?
Not that I'm aware of, no. Just a minimum, one hundred sixty days.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Richard?
Good work, Sandy.
Good work to the whole, everyone that helped us. Lots of consensus on this calendar.
Anybody else? Well, I appreciate the work that's gone into this and the amount of public, community input that's gone into it. And I just have one quick question, which is, is a hundred seventy-two days more than, is that an increase?
No, that's where we've been for quite a few years. That's contractual.
Okay, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
I guess we'll be bringing this back on consent?
Ben would bring, probably as consent, given the, the level of support on the twenty-fifth.
Then is okay with everybody? Okay, okay.
Thank you.
Well, that was fast. And then the last item on our agenda for tonight is agenda setting. And I did hear something about the way that language arts is taught in other middle schools, although that may be, we may choose to handle that as an RFI. So if somebody would draft one, that would be great.
I'll request that.
Does anybody else have anything that they would like to see on the agenda going forward?
So if I could just comment, Jenny, so we have agenda setting meeting, I think, with leadership next week.
I think that's right.
And so one of the things we plan to do is work from the list that we created with Heather.
Right.
And then what we'll incorporate are other kind of standing items regarding just procedural, that we'll do that. And the other element that wasn't in that discussion when we met with Heather most recently were updates on the success factor, the strategic plan. So we'll bring those, and that'll become kind of our new working document, then as we have our quarterly meetings with whatever process we choose to keep doing with that. Then we can add items to that list, or I suppose reprioritize if we choose to, or introduce new items that may come up that we don't anticipate. So I just want you to know that's what, we're trying to get that onto one planning format so we can do that going forward. And I also want to remind you, next Tuesday, I believe the eighteenth, is when we have the tour of the schools in the afternoon, following the agenda setting. I think the kickoff is one o'clock, leaving from this building. Again, if you can do the whole thing, that's great. It'll come back and start the work session after that. If you're not able to but want to join any part of that, if you'll just let Laura know, we'll work back with Susan and Kim and make sure that you know where we're at and at what time. But, and if it doesn't work at all because of other commitments you've made, just let us know and we'll get you into some of the schools. And I want to appreciate those that were able to make it to LMS, Littleville Middle School last week. So that was an attempt to kind of do some follow-up in the schools after we have board-level conversations around the strategic plan, and we'll continue that work this year as well. So, thank you.
I just want to echo what Tina said earlier, which is I'm thankful you're bringing the technology issue to our work session next week, because I think that's a really important issue to start moving on, from what I'm hearing. So thank you for moving that to the front of the work session.
What time is our work session, Jenny?
Um, the work session should be at five.
Five, yeah.
Five to seven. We usually have a two-hour schedule on that. So I hope to see you all, as many of you as can make it for the school tour next week and the work session, and the meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.